Call the beads, order at six thirty, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Call please.
Mason.
There.
Peterson.
Here.
Here.
Berman.
Here.
Minia.
Here.
Present. Um, the mayor will report, we have a couple of items to talk about tonight. First is, we have uh, two teachers that uh, are here, uh, Jennifer Zin-
Zin.
Zinsski and Tammy Johnson, Tammy Johnson. Um, they're both here because uh, they received awards, awards for meritorious service, those who excel, and teacher of the year awards to the Illinois State Board of Education. They were nominated by someone and then they had to go through an application process to obtain the award that included letters of recognition, administration, coworkers, and previous and current parents and students. So again, I want to take the time to uh, congratulate you and thank you for coming here for uh, recognition. So um, what, what do you teach?
I'm in eighth grade special education at Antioch upper grade. And uh, I volunteer with the Antioch traveling plazas, I coach, I do student council, trying to be very actively involved, diversity club as well.
Alright, well, thank you for your, your service.
I'm in fourth grade at W C T D and I'm a student.
Alright, well, thank you and thank you for taking time out tonight to uh- We also have Veterans Memorial Update, which I'll just briefly update. Uh, it's been a couple of weeks since we met, but since that time, uh, there's been progress. There's been a five oh one C three form, which I have been notified that that is now uh, able to accept donations towards the uh, project. There is a committee that uh, has been formed uh, actually led by uh, Deb Rentner and others. And there has been um, a very generous uh, participation by local uh, contractors that are um, going to help defray the cost on this project. Hopefully, a lot of the costs, it seems, and uh, they have agreed to uh, donate the soil borrowings, which uh, we talked about as well as the initial engineering of uh, of the Veterans Memorial. So um, we want to thank them and call them for recognition at a later date. Uh, we also had Congressman Brad Schneider has been um, making the rounds of the district. He came here and we um, walked him around downtown and brought him back to Village Hall to show him the projects that we were trying to do, the capital improvement projects. Um, timing uh, had it that they were accepting nominations for uh, grants through the federal government. Each congressman is able to submit uh, ten to fifteen grants. Uh, we did bring him back here and with the help of Jim and Ross and staff and Rachel, was able to put on a uh, very nice interactive presentation for him in the boardroom and showed him several projects. Um, and he uh, Jim Kind did submit the uh, Public Works Project uh, for ten million dollars, which Congressman Schneider then did uh, submit to the appropriations committee. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that uh, that something comes out of that. They will not do that, this government has it till October, so we'll know, we'll know that. Um, and then finally, a couple of acknowledgements. It is Autism Awareness Month. It is also Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Earth Day, we have a community cleanup um, scheduled through parks. Uh, you can find the information online for April twenty second to sign up for that event. So um, finally, is there any objection to um, closing Toff Street? On that date, they're going to be doing the beautification event that day with the, with the students, I believe, for the art program. So they're going to be doing the stenciling on that same day. Is there any objection by the board to close that for the stenciling that day? Alright.
Well, actually, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but on Friday they'll do the stenciling and then on Saturday for the painting.
Yep, so-
So it actually-
Twenty first, twenty second, then?
Close.
Okay.
They'll still be able to go in their parking lot coming off of White Street.
So no objection if you do, uh, let staff know, but that's the plan currently. Um, next, uh, do any citizens sign up to address the board or any items?
No.
Okay. Um, alright, moving along. Consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agendas. Are there any requests to remove any of those items from consents? Otherwise, I entertain a motion at the second. Motion trustee Mason, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Please suggest.
Peterson?
Yes.
Um, Lugar?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries onto regular business. Um, first item is consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of one million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents to have a motion at a second.
So move.
Motion trustee Luther, second trustee Berman, discussion.
Go through certain people and they're, I don't know, why is it so high this?
Sure, um-
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, trustee Mason.
Just, is there-
Speak into the microphone.
Jim, you want to just tie-
What Scott usually does is just let the people on the- to let people know why it's so high this.
Sure.
Thank you.
Administrator Kind?
Certainly. Uh, there was a second, looks, second pay request from Alliance, two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, there's twenty-five thousand invoice for nine-one-one to spend com. There's sixteen thousand block um, payable here. There's a couple of bills here, fountain technologies, it's a fourteen thousand dollar one, they're designing splash pad. There is um, a large payment, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars due to Handy Foil, same or Tiff? Um, uh, financing incentive for Handy Foil, so um, there's a forty thousand uh, public risk fund, which is our workers' comp insurance. Uh, leading IT with a ten thousand dollar invoice for uh, we buy blocks of time in ten thousand dollar chunks for IT. And um, I mean, aside, the, the Schwinn sad grant here for sixty-seven thousand. Um, and then a couple of strand invoices for um, improvements on, on the park and change. So those are the invoices over ten thousand, so there's maybe close to one, one point, one point three or four million dollars there that are contained in those larger invoices.
Alright, thank you. Any other discussion? Alright, now, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lugar?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and of final renderings for the cafe building located at three fifty-two East Depot Streets. Let's see, Andy Williams is here, the architect. From Williams, and then-
So yeah.
We order the couple of yes. We have, we have a motion at a second on this. So, motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Domeniac, orders.
Thank you, your honor. Um, so we're, we're in the final stretch, uh, but with bid documents, the ninety percent set has essentially been approved by the village. Took a few comments. Um, and I know the team is bracing to get the building finished off and we are still on track for a advertisement for bid April twenty. And so with that, I know that you wanted to follow up on your information from Andy Dogan Williams. And he's providing some additional uh, renderings for you to look at tonight, so help us out.
Excuse me, Aaron, before you start, um, Dennis, could you lower the shade of where? Thank you, a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Good evening trustees, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Um, as Jim said, we um, and as we promised, the last time we showed you where we were in our progress um, with the building for the property. Um, we promised to come back and uh, show you um, more realistic renderings of the building and uh, show you a little bit more context of the entire site um, and um, some of the surrounding buildings. So um, we have a brief slide deck tonight showing um, some of the updated imagery on both of the plan of the building and um, some updated exterior renderings that I would say show the um, proposed materials and uh, scale and form of the building in a bit more uh, detail and sense of realism than you saw last time I presented. So if we could go to the next slide, please. Uh, just again, a site plan, um, orienting us. I think by now we're all familiar with where the building sits on the site relative to the bridge and to the pavilion. We've also put together a little bit of a three-dimensional plan. So if we take the roof off the building and cut the building like right across um, in, in half, this shows you a layout um, of how the two larger restrooms on the west side of the building work. Um, there are two individual um, single user restrooms um, for use by families or people with um, with special needs on the east side of the building. The south side of the building features the cafe, the concessions window, and um, kitchen food preparation area and storage. And the north side of the building um, is um, a series of rooms that contain um, our incoming electrical and water service for the site. Um, it contains um, our mechanical equipment, a furnace um, to, to heat the building during winter months and um, a number of other controls for the splash pad and other elements um, of the site. So basically, all of the utilities for the site, or almost all the utilities for the site, come into this building and then feed out to the rest of the site. So been spending a lot of time over the last few weeks coordinating all of these aspects and making sure it all fits. Next, please. Then we get to um, some of the images of the building. So this is showing the building in a little bit more detail. One sure, one thing I'm sure you're noticing right now is that there's a piece of the building missing that you saw last time. Um, one of the things in discussion with staff and the team that um, we would like to do is bid the extension of the building, the shelter portion of the cafe that's potentially enclosable is an alternate, so we know exactly what that um, piece of the project costs. So because we are doing that, we have to be able to show you an image of what it would look like without it. Um, so this particular image shows the building without that extension, and then if we go to the next image, um, you'll see it with, so you see how that extends out. We've slightly adjusted the size of that from what you've seen last time to make sure that there's enough space to circulate um, from the site um, across this. What you see in the right, lower right-hand corner of the image um, is the beginning of the bridge. So we, um, as we mentioned before, we were a little concerned about that being a real pinch point there, so um, we've moved the building back a little bit towards Depot Street and given this a little bit more space um, to be able to make that work. So that is an image um, showing um, the building with the extension. Next, please. Then just a couple more context images, um, showing um, a view a little bit pulled back from the creek, so you see how the materials on the bridge relate to the materials of the building. Next. Another view similar to what you saw before, showing the relationship of the pavilion to the building from across this, the creek. And then although we continue to sort of zoom out here in each of these images, um, another sort of aerial image showing the creek, um, the pavilion and the building in context. Another view, and then another view from the other side showing the creek, bridge, and then um, just for, um, for scale and materiality, start to see a suggestion of, of a church across the street, the historical society um, across the street. So um, the intent again is not to match those styles in these buildings perfectly, um, but to recognize them and complement them, similar materials and similar forms. So um, that's a brief update um, of where we are. Again, as Jim said, the team is moving very quickly towards um, completion of bid documents. Um, but we wanted to give you this chance to see our progress and um, give us semi-final um, commentary or ask any questions you may have before the project is bid. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Mason?
Just one, just one comment. All these pictures, these slides, um, is there a way to print these? So just so we can give the ancient books underling, so preserve for the museum? Something that happened a hundred years ago. These are, these are fascinating.
Absolutely. This is a PDF um, file provided to um, village staff earlier today.
I think, I think in the past, we've made pictures of something that went back for years, what happened. The annex around and-
Great suggestion.
Yeah.
They'll be shocked if we didn't do this in the better verse.
Yeah.
Trustee Peterson?
I don't have anything other than the, the ones we're going forward, let's move forward.
Trustee Luther?
Comments?
Trustee Berman?
I have nothing.
Trustee Domeniac? Alright, um, so for the record, let's do a call of vote for the people to- Roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Jim is this one, Mason's back.
Alright, next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance adding a class J BYOB license to Antioch Academy of Arts to be located eight ninety-six Main Street, uh, ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four dash one oh six to have a motion at a second.
So we're waving the second rating.
Motion trustee Domeniac waving second.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, um, any discussion on this item? This is um, not the same art studio, but this is behind the uh, St. Jamesburg, St. Jamesburg A T L store, so for reference. Any discussion on this? Alright, roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lugar? Yes.
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a variance for the rear yard setback for the cafe building located at three fifty-two East Depot Street. Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero four dash zero seven. I'll entertain a motion at a second, waving, second reading.
So wave in the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Domeniac, any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Domeniac?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next item, consideration and approval of a resolution approving a site plan for a cafe building located at the property commonly, commonly known as three fifty-two East Depot Street. Resolution number twenty-three dash eighteen to have a motion at a second.
So move.
Motion trustee Luther?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, any discussion about this item? Roll call, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Minia?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with William Morris and Denver Entertainment LLC for the two thousand twenty-three, its Thursday summer concert series kickoff concert on June eighth in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Resolution number twenty-three dash thirteen, I have a motion in the second.
So move.
Motion trustee Domeniac?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson. Um, so we have uh, Jim Moran here, his discussion and questions about this. Um, I believe the updated contracts has been included in the packet, has been reviewed by staff and the attorneys um, today, so. Floor is yours, Jim, beauty.
Great. Um, I'm excited to present this to you guys. This is for our kickoff concert on Thursday, June eighth. And um, it's, it's a bit more than what we had spent last year on a concert. Uh, one thing, we partnered with uh, US ninety-nine radio on this particular concert. Uh, and we're also working on a concert, uh, weekend, July with them, with, with the same ownership for WXRT radio. And they've helped us with sponsorship money to offset a lot of the costs. So this particular concert uh, is more money than we spent last year, but uh, in all uh, between this and the DXRT shows, uh, we're getting like right now, about forty thousand dollars worth of sponsorship money on books to offset these costs. Uh, and then we're also retooling, waiving some of the concession sales also, which will bring more revenue to the building. So, um, with that, um,
You guys have any questions on the contract? Um, decide, uh, trustee Mason?
I got, I got the house. So if these, these are kind, this is a country band.
Yes.
So I look at that, I give two notes. So my only concern, which I brought the concern up, you know, we're using taxpayer money, and, and what you said, we're getting some of the cost offset of the forty thousand dollars spent. My concern is that these guys are, are good, then they draw in a hundred thousand people and we get six caps on duty.
So I, with the promoter, I'm working with a um, I, I guess, part of, part of the way to offset this is through the marketing and promotion of the concert, uh, promoting the fact that it's limited seating. Um, you know, we, we, you know, I, I think about five thousand people is capacity, um, which we've been you know, packing up pretty good. Um, so what we'll do is, first of all, promote the concert, it's limited seating, get here early to get your place. Uh, and the nice thing about partnering with the radio station and we were able to do this with Bo Rock last year. Anytime we partner with the radio station, most people coming to the concert will have the radio station on. So if, if, if we have nature, it's seventy-two and sunny and the most beautiful day in the summer, everybody decides to come to Antioch that night, you know, if we're able to rent people to go elsewhere or announce that that capacity, that sort of thing. Uh, I've also been working with Chief Dutchow, uh, and his staff, uh, we, we have started the, the planning process, the site planning for that day, I'm working with Chief Cofer also um, to, to make sure that, that were set. Uh, if need be, I know that there are other options besides utilizing just our officers, but you know, that's, that's something that I've talked to the, the chief about. Now, as we get closer to that, um, you know, we're preparing to that.
Cause even the old days with the fireman dance, they had county sheriff, you know, those reserve guys. Um, they had backup ambulances, they had the fire dance because those guys were all drinking back in the day. It was just the way of times, but uh, they had uh, backup ambulance services. So, that's my fear. Um, um, of course, recouping the money because, you know, we always had the issue, the biggest complaint senior center, you know, wasn't just Antioch people spending, coming in there with, you get other people that's where using Antioch money, we gotta recoup that money, but we also gotta recoup money spent on our public safety, but we can't overwork that. How much, uh, you know, twenty, twenty officers that we, that we have to provide if it gets that big and overtime?
Uh, um, one thing, for what it's worth, I assure you're seeing perspective that safety is a priority. So as we work and, and work on the incident plan, that's a priority. Uh, one of the things too, uh, that would be important to note is uh, besides just the concert, the event, the people coming down that day, your skills, all that sort of thing. Uh, the visibility within the village and so the economic impact downtown. Uh, right now, I was hoping to be able to announce it by tonight, uh, but I'm working with uh, somebody to to do a presentation within the next six weeks. I, either later this month or in the next month. Uh, a workshop to help our business owners uh, maximize events like this, whether it's this concert or, you know, wine walk events or other events that happen downtown. Um, and it's not just in this town. Other places I've been, big complaint by merchants is, oh, all these people come down, but they don't spend money and that's, we lose money that day and that sort of thing. And, and statistically, the right um, defense, uh, people come down to go to a concert, not necessarily to go clothes shopping. However, the, the cumulative long-term impact of events like that is very positive, treat them well. That's one of the one of the things we're doing differently with, with the concerts this year is really pushing for the economic development.
No, I, I understand it's good for Antioch, but you also, it could be, you know, bad for Antioch if there's a major incident that would happen.
Yeah.
Then it tarnishes Antioch, and we don't want to be that community that a car drives through like in happen in Wisconsin. It's a situation where one incident's doing more, and I trust that, that our chief, he's the best we got. So, it's just my concern is we overwhelm and overwork some of the people because there are eight. Because we got the same police force we had under Summer, uh, Chief Summerhill. We have the same manpower, we haven't grown, and we're asking so much of them. And we keep demanding more of these folks, men and women. And we haven't done anything. Our village is growing and our police department hasn't since when was Summerhill here? He was this, ten years ago. The building, the police department is the same, manpower's the worst ten years ago. Populations grown, so that's my concern.
And thank you, trustee Peterson.
I don't have any comments, Aaron.
Trustee Luther?
Um, just one question on the, because the contract with the entertainment. Yes, there's a, there's a lot of blanks underneath the transportation accommodations.
So is that supposed to be that way or we?
Yeah, so, so in the, so the next step in the process is signing the agreement with, with the agency that represents the band. From there, uh, the band is a, is a rider agreement, which is, you know, what kind of food they want backstage, this and that. And part of that is hotel accommodations and uh, transportation and that sort of thing. At this point, I don't even know if they need hotel or transportation. They're coming in a, they, they would come in on two tour buses that would mark that, that show. And, and way, being on a Thursday night, you know, they, they very well could have a show the following night, most likely Saturday night. So they might hit the road right after the concert, so they might not need any of that. Typically, as we get closer to events, those are the kind of details that are worked out through the rider. And then they, for what it's worth, they, they have a rider where they ask for the world and we go in and kind of figure out what, what they would be needing. And one of the things that I've already established now is we're not, you know, we're, we're a small town looking to put on a performance for our community. We're, we're not one of these huge venues that has all the money of the world, so we have that understanding also.
Thank you. Trustee Berman?
Um, I'm pretty sure you had stated this before in our meeting.
Sure.
Um, how, the Royal Bless last year, how many people were, thought in attendance?
You know, our, our best estimate, thirty-five, thirty-five hundred to maybe four thousand.
Okay.
I, I decided to put my, uh, thirty-five hundred maybe.
And then how, I guess, how many police officers do we have for that?
So.
Um, and was that? Sorry, I just want, I'm just trying to get a feel for how that much of, of police officers.
So, so since we didn't really have to focus on traffic control for that event, most of the uh, resources were allocated to crowd security and crowd control. Very, very few minor incidents related to alcohol, but nothing you wouldn't find in any other event such as that. Um, we're working with, Jim, he's worked with the promoters to try to identify what the anticipated crowd size for this will be. It will, uh, will scale up or down as appropriate.
Um.
So, real quick, for what it's worth, too, uh, one of the things that we target is we want a family oriented event, which hopefully the crowd would represent that and the behavior.
And I have one more question. I, I'm not sure if I listed in, um, the, that we have.
Sure.
Um, as far as if it ends up being bad weather, is there, what is the policy for that?
So the policy in the contract is we're responsible either way. Um, so right now, I, I, I'm getting a quote on rain insurance. Um, so what that is, is uh, it, it, or I guess severe weather insurance, whatever it's called, if severe weather cancels the show, then then we'll be burst out of our insurance policy regardless of costs.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Domeniac?
Is this the concert that's being underwritten by Raymond Schubel like here?
So, yes and no. So Raymond has come in to, I've kind of pulled all the band show concerts, the, the kickoff show, regular Thursday shows, and then a, a, a new thing for kind of a standalone thing, the weekend after the Fourth of July. Um, it's a, it's July seventh, eighth, and the ninth is uh, WXRT will like to do the seventies, eights, nineties weekend. So the way the math worked out is they have agreed to underwrite the cost of that. And by, by lumping basically the two big shows together, that offsets the cost for that show. Um, and then he's got, I'm presenting sponsorship for everything. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you. Just want to make sure in the record that
Yeah.
He's making that contract.
Very, very grateful.
Questions? You say the crisis. That's a secret? Um, alright, so any uh- That's a secret. Um alright, so any uh any other questions? If not, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
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 Five voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, um next item is uh consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator. To purchase a native vegetation vegetation mats from Agricall LLC, the amount to seventy-five thousand four hundred sixty dollars. Resolution number twenty-three dash nineteen to have a motion in a second.
Second.
Motion trustee Bluthard, second trustee Peterson, uh discussion or questions for district items item? Just see Mason.
Well, this this is for Peters, this is for the park, right?
Correct.
But when's this, when's this back gonna be put on during construction?
Yes, so this would be, we're envisioning installation in the October timeframe for this to be installed. This would be along the creek slopes. Native vegetation, prairie flowers, they're selecting colorful um species, some taller grasses. Um so think of it as sod, but not with turf grass with native prairie plantings. They're that cool.
Yeah.
Right, they grow, they're gonna grow these indoors and get the, get the mats prepared. In the, it takes, it takes about four to six months to get.
Oh, I understand that, the are these gonna be there next year, or he's gonna be that winter?
Oh, and that and you could good questions, I asked a lot of the same questions, not familiar with product, but um. No, they say fall is a good time to plant, um they'll they'll start rooting really next year, it'll take about a two-year period for these things to deeply root. Um to protect the shoreline, um but no, they recommend planting in the spring or fall, because that was a picture right?
Flowers growing, ten people ocean, ten people on the port of ice, while it's construction. You, uh you you, we're building the park, we're building all the things, you gotta have ocean out there, you gotta port bodies out, you got all the port flowers. Covering the port of ice.
Well, but I did go over timeframes and and all the different installation, you know, practices, and this would be just. It's so we get them in time, so where when the park would open, you want established vegetation, you wouldn't want seeded.
Yeah, and now construction guys, our flowers in, just walk right over.
Oh, then that's it, then they're not gonna get paid.
Yeah.
I control that, they they're, it will be instructed to make sure these are not disturbed after they are installed.
That, yeah, that's that's the concern, because you see that on golf courses where people go walk and they're walking all over.
That's for you to hear about it.
Yeah, it's a careful consideration, these are those areas with the bottom of the nets, they're, you know, they're gonna have to basically place these mats. In between the stone outcroppings, so it has that naturalized look, so it there's gonna have to be very specific instructions to protect those areas after installation. Because obviously it's costly.
Trustee Peterson.
Also, these plantings are gonna be on the slopes. Nowhere near where a port of body would be on a slope, right? Port of bodies would be up in in the construction area where they're building the buildings and on level ground. Um and uh so this is gonna, these are natural um indigenous plants. So they're gonna come back every year and hold this bank in place, it's awesome, okay?
The exact purpose of the the selection of this particular planting style. And it's intended for shoreline and slopes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, that's all you have, you're on.
Trustee Bluthard.
Two questions, one is, does the company pick? So I see you have the list of what's gonna be planted or in this path, or was that something the architects?
Yeah.
Side or who picked all that stuff?
Both, the the uh Makota group uh was very active in selecting this species. Cause they were interested in different colors and timing of the flowers, um but then the um. Agr- Agricall um company had their own suggestions on. You know, the right kind of mix to make it native, you you know, they have specific products. Mostly what we're buying is called um. Short shortened sassy or shortened showing, short shortened shortened showing, because we don't want, we don't want.
I was just saying, because it said that it shows the max height is about three foot, and now we're near the covering of the port of body.
Oh, it should be, I trust that these folks know what they're doing, so it was a collaborative effort on the species selection.
And um and just tying in kind of with some other questions, is there gonna be construction fencing around this whole park until it's done? Or at one point, uh we're not gonna have a wide open construction.
I met on this yesterday and clarified that this will be a secured site with fence, we have a lot of fencing there that I think. Cut down our cost for that, but they'll probably have to bring in a little bit more, we we think the site should definitely be secured. I I.
I agree.
We we had a a short discussion on fabric on the fence, I don't know if you'd rather people see what's going on behind that or not. Um the fabric gets difficult in the winds, we spend a lot of time fixing the fabric, so.
I think it's nice if they can see it, but I think we just need to protect it so that it doesn't get disturbed and so it's ready.
Absolutely, so yeah, for sure secured, six-foot security fencing like you see there, but I think for for security reasons. Police would wanna see into this site, so nobody can be it it back behind the curtain after dark or anything like that, so.
I agree.
That's all. Trustee Berman.
Um did you say, who was, who's installing this? Is it the company or is it gonna be? The.
I imagine the general contractor will will hire um a lands, probably a landscaper or. You know, whoever will do the rest of the planting, so that's what I would envision would be a subcontractor to the G C doing the installation.
And then I was reading, I looked on their website, I thought it was pretty interesting, um. And I saw that they they said that it needs to be basically closely monitored for. Like the week after, and I'm assuming probably, you know, a little bit after that too, and watered to um. Who would be doing that?
I am hoping that the irrigation system is up and running by next fall, so we wouldn't have to handwater it, but. It would be an incidental to the contract, contractor will be responsible for watering an establishment. Um and that will be specified in the spec book that goes up to bill.
Trustee Domeniak.
Um please sell these from your house, I've been wanting to see my shoreline.
It's forty-four dollars a yard.
I'll check it out. No, I don't have any question, you know, maybe just looping in my, are you calling them?
Alright, anything else for discussion? Anyways, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
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 Berman?
Yes.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries, last item on the regular agenda is consideration of the approval of the operating budget fiscal year May one. Twenty twenty-three to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, have a motion second.
So both.
Trustee Peterson, second, second trustee Bluthard. Discussion, obviously we have uh, this tour is here to, any questions, um obviously it is very kind. Spent, I've watched them spend lots and lots and lots of time together on this stuff, so I'll start with the, just the basic.
Well, typically, year after year, liaison met with the department head, just sure we didn't do it, so.
I I was of the understanding that you you were contacted by the department heads, so.
And I did, just I did talk, that's what I did talk, but.
If if anyone would like a meeting, that's standing off, or I think we, an email went out asking if anyone wanted, wanted to meet, some of you didn't meet, so I never stopped either.
But um it it's just weird, it's just weird, because I just wanna make sure that everything is covered, that was covered, that. They get what they want or everything to put in future budgets.
I would be happy to sit down with any of you, answer any que- any questions.
I don't know if anybody else got that sit down or. It's just.
Yeah, some, some of the, some of the board members did have a chance to sit down and have a meeting, um we're certainly open. And welcome, and and for, and for the record, this meeting and one more that, you know, to get it. Passed through this, and then, May one date, backish, did she get interviewed to sit down? Was true, I've not had the opportunity to.
So I think, I think at least delay.
Well, yeah, we can discuss it, and like I said, if there's a chance that you want to download the.
Cause all started, she's gonna be working with it.
Have to scare the public, but I never saw the budget before I said it here on the May fifth, when I was elected.
Well.
Scare the public, yeah, I kind of was, here's the budget, you know, that's what it was, so, uh but I get it, I don't have any um. I don't have any aversion to, you know, sitting down there and showing that, I think that's coming in, that is a good thing. Um but I said, yeah, if it's not tonight, just wanna make sure that this gets passed by. Next door board.
Yeah, and typically.
That is balanced, right, it is balanced, and yeah.
And typically that happens during during a newly elected official orientation, you know, meeting where we'll sit down after. The elected officials installed and go through all of that, but I, no problem, I wanna do that in advance.
I just wanna get that good. Any other discussion on this, um yeah, let's go trustee uh Peterson.
At this time now.
Second trustee Bluthard, uh this one, trustee Berman, trustee Domeniak.
Yeah, I actually um would like to delay this until next week, I didn't realize at the last meeting since I wasn't here, but. I thought you had discussed a lot of this and that we were gonna be discussing it more tonight, so. You know, I'll own that, but um I'm hoping that um I had questions about. Um the projections for the business district revenues, um looking at the actuals and knowing what's going on downtown. I have some concerns about the projections for next year, so um you know, a lot of the businesses are. I just, I guess I'm not really sure how you plan to go from the actual. Seventy or fifty, very. Six fifty-one up to ninety fifty-five.
Yeah, so.
And I'm the same on the E fellow, and I was familiar with.
And that goes right with sales tax as well, and. It's great, it's a great question, good pickup, so in the accrual accounting method.
I could book it.
Um so the revenue, sales tax revenues that we may receive in May were collected in February. So when you see those, those uncollected numbers that look like, hey, how can we make that up in one month? There's really gonna be three more accruals that will be totaled, and she can go into it in more detail of why she doesn't have it.
Okay, so just for the record, as a finance director, I am very conservative, conservative. I hate to see my projections not be, I would never overstate, I'd rather always be on the O N E A. And that's it, that's my history as finance director, so regarding the revenues, the certain revenues that. Such as sales tax, income tax, telecommunications, um Comcast. Um franchisees, items like that, they get accrued, so during the year, the municipalities operate on cash basis. In order to put financial statements together, it is illegal to put financial statements for gas B S cash basis accounting. What happens is from May to July, I monitor everything that comes to the system, including invoices. So even when you see the audit, you will see that your expenses on four thirty will not match the audit. Because what happens is we're still waiting for vendors to turn in invoices, so every time an A P comes through this. Through my desk or through the system, I monitor to see the date on it, and I have to put it in this year's budget. Same thing with the revenues, definitely for sure, May and June, and probably the first week in July. You'll see that I will be taking revenues that come in, because the state is behind, and we will accrue them to the new year. So when you look at the budget, you're probably saying, wow, these revenues, we're not gonna make it, even Jim calling into his office. He did his due diligence to make sure that I am meeting the target and we will, so it's because it's accrual accounting, okay?
Um the other question that I had is, what is in this budget, I couldn't find it, it's probably there, um for salary increases.
Three percent.
Okay, so is that something, and on the past, we've had discussions about whether or not we're gonna pass a three percent, so. Um I don't know if that's something that we wanna do next meeting or not, or are we just gonna prove the budget as it is with three percent? I guess that's a question for the board, um and then I think it also does bring up what we've had conversations with in the past about it is. Uh and I know it's not part of the budget process, but forms pay, base pay, talk about that in the budget. Pass how many years? Suggest that maybe that'd be something to do moving forward, um when we see the road program?
We're working on it. Do you think we can be in a position of presented at the next meeting? We've talked about Wolf's Road, um we're talking about a number of different roads. But yeah, I I I think we can be in a position to make some recommendations on the selected roads. We have a million dollar placeholder in there uh for roadway, which is about what we've been doing, but I'll give you a little presentation at the next.
And are we gonna um pre-approve that then? I mean, we've done that in the past where you go out, you get the materials.
Yeah, it would be, it would be better to, yeah, maybe at the next meeting, i- if we did approve it. And authorize us to start getting that bidding process going ear- earlier as well.
I don't know, what the price of asphalt is these days, but I'm sure it's gone off, yeah. Then, um when I listened to the meeting, data had made a comment that the capital plan was still in development. Then looking at the summary, is this the capital plan that you hear, has there been an update to what's in here?
The numbers, I think, are sent in. In the budget, yes. Um but you'll get a, you typically get a budget book, which will have more. Verbage and descriptions and all that's still gonna be in the works, so you'll get that a little bit later, the capital on plan itself. Um what we're planning to do is all been budgeted and included in this budgeted map.
So in basic case, just one of my questions is, um. And you you probably don't need to answer this right now, but um as I was looking at this, um certainly the the cost of the. Park is higher than we all anticipated, um but I also was surprised to see the cost of the public works building. My recollection, it was always in the eight or nine million dollar, and now it's at twelve, so I'm not looking for an explanation right now, but. Love to get an update as to what's driving those costs up, um.
Yeah, I can answer now, you know, when we put seven and a half million, that that was just a guess. And now we're working with an architect that's actually giving us, in some cases, a harsh, realistic viewpoint of what things really cost.
So will you be bringing that before the board, for the board to vote on approving that design and everything? And you know, will he be coming up with maybe some contingency plans for how to cut costs?
Yes, and in. It, we're now in the process with Williams on both Village Hall Building and the Public Works Building. We went through space needs analysis, where you get, that staff gets a chance to say, well, this person's in the office, and this person's at workstation, and. Should we have two mop mop sink closets, or you know, all of those discussions come now, they're at a point where. They're gonna start doing some layout, assigning people to spaces, doing some layout, and that will come to the board. Um at some point, I I think we might be a month or so away from that, where you get to see possibly a rendering, maybe a bit, maybe just a floor plan. And some square footage costs, um but yeah, the meetings, the mayor has participated in in these meetings and it's. Has similar concerns of what costs are doing, um all kinds of materials. Um so yeah, we're gonna go, we're gonna have to go through an eff- make an effort to stay within budget, now I don't, I was hoping not to. You know, back into a number, not build something that's gonna be suitable for the future, you know, I, you know, I'm hoping that we'll have sufficient revenues. Um especially, which is why I think the grant from um Congressman Schneider would would be fabulous. So it may allow us to build what we really should be. Um, especially, which is why I think the grant from um, Congressman Schneider would, would be fabulous, it may allow us to build what we really should be building. Otherwise, we will, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do some, some value engineering here, and get, get it realistic. But we're not, we're not there yet, we're probably a month or so away from seeing those numbers and those downs.
Okay. Fifteen to twenty percent increase in the last year in construction.
Yeah, we were, we were being told, you know, possibly to five hundred dollars a square foot, that rushing costs for like a, a public building, you, you know, um, just in the last year. It was a, you know, I, I was astounded by that, you know, so it wasn't too long, but that, but that number was two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, so. We're gonna have to make a very conscious effort to control costs here, while providing the right facilities that will serve this community forward, and we'll talk about staging, potentially, future additions or things that could be based in over time, but. I'm trying very hard to do this right.
Well, and I think to add to that, and I know we had this discussion, one of the quarterly meetings is, you know, should we be thinking about more of a campus over there? And one of the things that we had talked about, and I don't know, that's been discussed with the architect, you know, I'm a little bit off topic here, but um, you know, is that is there an opportunity to design a building so that down in the future, um, you could possibly move a police station over there? And get some of our commanders out of closets, offices, um, so I, I would hope that, one of the things that is being discussed with the architect is opportunities for expansion of that facility for other uses. You know, a lot of communities do have campuses for their municipal buildings. Um, I wanna clarify too, that I'm not, I'm suggesting that there should be a three percent increase in the salary, I'm just kinda surprised that we're not having a discussion like we have, have in the past, and I just see that, um, and then the other question that I had is, um, I wasn't sure, I got an email with two different position descriptions, is that the only increase in the budget?
Uh, uh, and I believe we budgeted for a C S, uh, full-time C S O as well.
For, excuse me, I don't know why I'm using that word.
I thought it was three positions.
Yeah, good, I think it's a C S O slash code enforcement, yeah, right?
So, wait, okay, I'm glad.
Yeah, C S O slash.
Code enforcement.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know if this is a time to discuss this, or maybe we could do it at the quarterly meeting, I have concerns about, that concerns, questions about the need for the assistant administrator position, I'd like to better understand the question. But, um, what are we doing with that, or do you want to do this?
Let me suggest that, um, based on the discussions, that we, um. Somebody would uh, make a motion to table this, and everyone would schedule their times with the administrators and staff between now and next meeting, get all the questions at the table, budget, and then have these discussions like that, um, at the next, and like down the quarterly.
Table is to the next, or the.
A second, no.
I don't think so, so, not publishing.
No, it's a good point. It's a good point, trustee Mason, but is, this is not a public hearing, it's set up for approval, so the motion to table, not debatable, would be, looks to proceed to subsequent.
Thank you, I seconded that.
Tr- trustee Bluthard made the motion, seconded by trustee Domenac, uh, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
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 Berman?
Yes.
And when you.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Alright, well, I bet that we'd be out here at seven thirty, so you're very tired of your change, administrators report.
Do you have some information in your box, or it was handed to you about the public input process for the park's master plan, so please uh, do what kind of promoted we want of response, as much response as we can to the survey, and um, we're, we're gonna have some uh, town hall style meeting, stakeholder meetings, um, to get feedback about our park system, so please just wanted to alert you to that, Mary's done a good job of driving that uh, project so far. Um, and just so you're aware, there was a small flood in the basement below us, um, happened today, um, Public Works responded, fire was here to cancel off the alarms that were going off, and we'll actually respond. Um, the R P C seems to have had an issue downstairs on the porch, uh, main feeding our suppression system, so we'll, we'll get it taken care of. If you saw a fire truck here, that was.
Alright, um, how's clerk? Alright, no reports, any trustee reports other than those received in writing? Right, just, just need blither.
Start a question. How did we end up on those squad cars from the last meeting, to be able to purchase six, or are we doing three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, through, they were purchased in groups of three, but yeah, at six. We were able to, Jeff and his staff, um, were able to find them, they did a really good job of getting them, and kudos to them, we're actually finding.
Excellent, thank you. Justy Domenac?
Um. This Saturday is Spring Social, which is a, an event that's been, um, put together by the businesses downtown. And everybody had a pretty tough first quarter, so I would urge you all to find some time to go shop or dine downtown, um, and I'd like to request that maybe we sweep the streets of, on Friday, um, there's all sorts of sorted things on the curbs in the, in town that you probably don't want wandering around in the gutters. Um, and then the same request for, um, when they do the stem saling and painting on the twenty-first and twenty-second, that we clean that street up really good, so that they can paint. And that's it, but please support these businesses, I think they put a lot of effort into, um, coming up with all sorts of things for people that are shopping, and they could use the support of the village board and staff, and Mary, thank you for asking us to take a look at your survey. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, um, any requests for executive session? Alright, um, I'll mention a motion to adjourn, motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Mason?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Berman?
Yes.
I'm the.
Yes.
Five, five voting yes, meeting's adjourned, send me to me so.